I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Noel.
Good morning.
Entertained motion to approve the agenda?
Will.
Will.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Minutes from the June 25th. I look through them, I like.
I would say if you look through them, I didn't get verbatim, word for word, they look okay, I would make a motion to approve as printed.
Motion.
A second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. General public, concerns? Kent, did you stand up, do you have a concern?
No, I've got it done and over with, I'm not concerned.
Well, at least that line is sweet. At least he's honest.
Mess around here very long.
You just have front page and humble cover doing that, right? Get it over with and get out of here. We'll skip that part and keep moving, looks like Scott. Come on, just don't make Kent mad, you know?
Apparently we're on a tight schedule.
Yeah, right, better be short to the point.
Good thing Carl was there to have the coffee, Kent really wouldn't be mad.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to, you know, get in front of the board, July 1st is the renewal date for the county's insurance policy. So I just wanted to kind of do a recap with the county, with the supervisors this morning at the meeting and go through the highlights and kind of touch on some things that have changed overall. So we'll just start from the front and get into the property section. Our property is on a blanket basis, so that's your inside cover page. Our current blanket amount for, this is basically buildings and contents within the buildings. We're at eighteen million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars worth of blanket property coverage, as you see there. Our deductible is a thousand dollars. The RC that's on there is a replacement cost on most, most all of those buildings are replacement costs. And then we have a special form of loss, or cause of loss form that we have. I do have the, I've got several schedules, some of them have been gone through ahead of this. And then there are some that will have all these schedules that Peggy will have. And one of them is our statement of values, which goes building by building, address by address, value by value. So that's, Peggy will have that available. That's basically how we get to our eighteen million. And we'll just have that, want to make sure that we're in agreement with the addresses anyway. And that, we'll see on the summary there that at the end, our property values are up due to just basic inflation guard, since they are replacement cost buildings. Every year there's a push on, in general, to move buildings up to keep up with current labor and material rates. And then some fluctuations there. And this includes our, of course, our boiler and equipment and some sewer backup, just some things of that nature there. On our crime side, which is the second page, that's a two-hundred thousand dollar employee dishonesty with a thousand dollar deductible. We do have additional bonds in place for the treasurer and then each department head has a separate bond, but this would be employee dishonesty. So this would be anything over and above that, whether it's property that gets taken out the back door and sold on eBay or something like that, that we catch wind of, that we have any kind of employee dishonesty on that. The next page is our liability. This is where we have a two million dollar in general aggregate for our liability on an annual basis. Two million dollar personal advertising injury, two million dollar for occurrence. So basically we've got the first two million dollars of any kind of liability is going to come out of here. And that includes employment practices, public official liability, law enforcement liability. So all of our liabilities, the initial coverage where that's going to fall would be here. And then, of course, we have, as we see later, we'll have an umbrella section that will provide additional liability coverage on that. Most of the top lines, if it's just a standard liability for property damage or bodily injury through the normal course of operation, there is no deductible that applies to those kinds of liability situations. The ones on the bottom half where it happens to be employment practices or a public official E and O type decision-making process, those do come with a deductible, you see that, noted there at five thousand dollars. And those bottom ones are claims made, retrodate effective. So basically what that means is this policy has to be in effect at the time the claim is made and can't be canceled before the claim is finished. So that's, any questions on that section, that's where we're at with that. Our business auto is the next section. Again, we're at a two million dollar liability level for any automobile accident. We've got medical payments outside of any county employee. Their medical for any injuries in an automobile accident would be carried through workers' compensation. But this would be, you know, passengers perhaps that may not be employees of the county. There's medical payments available there. Uninsured motorists coverages are a million dollars. And then our comprehensive and collision deductibles for most vehicles are noted on there as well. And that is another one of our schedules that Peggy will have available. Here is our schedule of covered autos listed there, so. And then at the bottom you'll see we have the hired and non-owned liability. So that just protects the county if there is an employee from the courthouse or someplace that is not driving a county vehicle to a meeting, you know, maybe even supervisors or something like that, if you're not driving a county-issued vehicle. Then you have an accident, you're, you know, the owner of that car is the primary liability in that accident. But the county might not know what kind of limits they have, if they pay their premium, that kind of thing. So if the situation escalates and they find out that you're acting on behalf of the county and then the county gets involved through a lawsuit of some sort, this is how we're protected. We have hired and non-owned because the county doesn't own that vehicle, but it was being used on behalf of the county. That's where we'll be protected with that on a secondary, that's always on a secondary basis after the. Equipment floater section, this is primarily where we find a lot of equipment that Ben's department has, all of our backos, road graders, all those kind of things. This is the section where that falls. And so you can see down there in the middle, we have a schedule of about three point six million dollars there. The biggest change that came about is our new communications equipment that got struck by, the equipment that got struck by lightning last fall. We've purchased all that new Motorola communications equipment. That's that second line, the communications equipment. That ends up on this because it's insured as a separate, they call it an EDP, electronic data processing form. It's a broad, it's much broader and more responsive to have that listed here. So that's where ICAP recommends we insure that new equipment. So even though it's not necessarily mobile in nature, because this equipment floater is kind of where you find the mobile equipment, this is where the EDP form puts it underneath the schedule. And then just things that of note here, deductible a thousand dollars in the bottom thing, leased or rented equipment. We've got, the policy currently allows us fifty thousand dollars in automatic coverage for any piece of equipment we might rent. So if we need access to a high lift or something like that, we rent it. Just know that we have fifty thousand, that certainly can be increased on a per project basis or something. If we get into something big where it's, you know, seventy-five thousand dollar piece of equipment.
Rent a crane or something.
Yeah, rent a crane and, you know, that can be communicated through me and we can get that adjusted for the temporary basis. Workers' compensation is the next section. There's a million dollars for employer's liability for each accident by disease and policy limit on each employee. Now that's just the employer's liability. Any kind of medical that comes out of work comp or any kind of lost wages through work that might come about for an injury, that is unlimited. So if somebody generates two million dollars over the course of two years from a lot of medical treatment, rehab and lost time, you know, that's not going to be limited by this section. This section is only, the million dollars here is only if a lawsuit gets generated. Generally the statutes protect the employer because the statutes say that we're responsible for our employees' injuries. So therefore the statute also makes that their sole remedy for coverage. But in certain circumstances of gross negligence and things like that, the statutes do allow potential lawsuits back and that's where we have a million dollars coverage. And our umbrella will go with that if necessary. Those are very rare and few and wanted to. Things to note here, our experience modification and premium adjustments, we're at point eight eight. That's up. Last year we were at point seventy-four, so we had a little uptick. And that's going to see, when you see the premium comparisons from last year to this year, most of how our premium change derived from work comp and this is a big reason why. I mean, obviously point eight eight is still very good. IMWCA tells me the average is point eighty-four, so we're still right in the ballpark of the average. It's just that we've had a little experience over the last few years that, and it's all based on our loss runs. And I've got the claim loss run. Majority of where our claims come from, law enforcement, the sheriff's department, law enforcement and secondary roads is, you know, but those are the most active areas where you see that.
How could you explain the experience modification at point eight eight, Scott?
I mean, so the, I'm going to just take a guess, the lower that number, the better? Better, it's a pure factor that gets multiplied to your gross premium. So if you were at one point oh, then that's break even. You know, you're no worse than the rates because the state, the state of Iowa sets the rates for each class code. There's class codes, so office employees have a class code and a rate assigned to it. And that's assigned by, you know, the state of Iowa as the base. So if I have a workers' compensation policy at my office, my rate to start at is the same as what Humboldt County has, what Casey Nielsen has, things like that. So, and then from there, the way they differentiate that is based on your claims experience. There's a formula that then gets a mod factor. So yes, this in a sense, you're getting twelve percent below the base.
Below break even.
Below the break even, yeah, below the step rate.
Insurance companies to break even. Right, but then this is going to fluctuate based on your claims history.
Right, so if you have a bad run, you know, that's where safety is important to impress upon supervisor, department heads and supervisor heads to practice safety and have safety meetings because obviously if we have a run of bad luck with claims, this can go above one.
Yeah, you can get two points off them, I've seen them.
Yeah.
For like health insurance, I mean, health insurance. Right. You don't want it to go up.
Yeah, so you can.
Does this get adjusted every year?
Yes.
Because this is yearly review, obviously.
It's a rolling, it's a rolling, it's a rolling, you know, three-year claims experience. And so as things drop off the back and what comes in the front.
Three-year average to come up with.
Right, and it's a formula that is way beyond, I mean, it's several, I couldn't explain how that formula works. It's more than just simply, how many claims did you have? I mean, it's a.
Amount of claims.
Yeah.
Size of claims.
Size of claims, there's a lot of factors and they use prediction, you know, predicting future losses somehow based on current losses or a whole bunch of different factors. But yeah, the nuts and bolts of it is, is point eight eight, you're getting a twelve percent reduction off of the base rate. And then yeah, if anybody, you know, if you had a one point one, you'd be a ten percent debit above paying more. Another adjustment, these two kind of go hand in hand. IMWCA also offers their own experience credit. So we're getting a seventeen percent rate reduction for that. And that was up, we were at point eight last year. But those are, those two are going to kind of move in tandem there.
What's the IMWCA stand for?
That's the Iowa Municipal Workers' Compensation Association. So this is, IMWCA is strictly what they work with is municipal entities. So they work with cities and counties to provide workers' compensation.
That's really, goes back to workers' compensation.
Yeah, yeah. IMWCA, that's what they're built for and designed for, that's what they're created. So it's, yeah, it's kind of like the Iowa, ICAP, you know, Iowa Community Assurance Pool. They were put together for county insurance, I think they have seventy-seven of the ninety-nine counties in ICAP. IMWCA is similar, they were built and put together to service municipal entities. Okay? And then the back is our umbrella. We are currently at four million dollars of additional coverage over and above our two million dollar auto, our two million dollar liability and our one million dollar workers' compensation, employer's liability piece there. So we've got an additional four million dollars. Down below you'll see the approximate additional cost to bump that to varying levels. Just to give you a point of reference, ICAP can't divulge specifics, but we asked, you know, where does four million compare to where everybody else sits? And out of the seventy-seven counties that are involved, fifty-four, I think it was, were at five million or higher for their liability. So we're, you know, that's about two-thirds of them are at that level. You know, but obviously some counties are more sizable than Humboldt County. So that's where things are at there. So there, you see the additional premium, you know, to get to five million, approximately fourteen hundred additional dollars. To get to six million, it's approximately twenty-seven hundred dollars. So that's something you guys can decide on, discuss if you want to move that direction. We can certainly get that put in place for it. And then the last page is the recap. So, you know, comparing from prior years, most sections with premiums are relatively flat. You know, business auto is actually down compared to last year, a few hundred dollars. The equipment floater is, has increased over last year, but that's primarily because we added that eight hundred thousand dollars worth of electronic data processing equipment for communications. And we had a couple hundred thousand dollars of just general secondary road purchase and increases on that. Our liability is down compared to last year, a few hundred dollars. Property section is up, again, as you see the notes on the bottom, our property values on our blanket were sixteen point four and they're at eighteen point one million. So we're at one point seven million of additional property coverage due to evaluations on buildings. But that's the reason for the premium differences there. Umbrella, very minor, a hundred and ninety dollars or two hundred and ten dollars, excuse me, change there on our umbrella. Workers' compensation, again, based on the overall difference, this is where the bulk of it is coming from, from fifty thousand to sixty-four thousand. And that's a combination of, you know, that's all payroll driven. So as payrolls increase due to either additional hirings or payroll, just general payroll wage increases, that's going to have a factor, but then our mod factor moving as well as our experience credit moving down a little bit, those are going to have the, an impact as well. And those are noted down below. Overall, that's at one hundred and sixty-five thousand. That is still less than two years ago, our premium two years ago was we were at a hundred and seventy thousand. So we're still, you know, it trended up, but we're still below where we were a few years back. So pending any of your questions, that's what I wanted to at least bring it before you and give you a recap. Like I said, we'll have, we've given Peggy a spreadsheet by department. So they, they will, we've passed that on to them for their.
That's it, they have to, yeah, copy please.
Copy please. So she'll pass that on by each department. There wasn't a credit of, of twelve hundred dollars, I think that was maybe even shown there, yeah, one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars on a credit voucher. That's up a few hundred dollars from last year. That's something the last few years, I am, or ICAP has given us a credit voucher. As far as what that, how that's determined is they have a reserve fund, obviously just like anything else, a surplus if you will. So on good years where premiums have out exceeded claims, this is sort of a return on a prorated basis back to the counties. Way to recoup some surplus that's been there. So we have that twelve hundred dollar credit and that gets divided out over the spreadsheet amongst the prorated on by department as well. So we'll have these schedules available. We've got the vehicle schedule, the statement of values on our property schedule, secondary road equipment schedule is all here as well as a claim summary for our workers' compensation. And there are a few items that will have signatures to turn into ICAP as far as acceptance and things, so.
Communications tower should be strictly law enforcement, right? Because they're the only ones tapped into that system that I know of. Secondary roads isn't hooked into that communications tower.
The new equipment.
The new equipment.
Yeah, it's, it's not that part of the premium just sits on that schedule where a lot of the road graders go. But yeah, we don't, when we split that out, it shouldn't be split as far as, that shouldn't.
They're allocated on us.
Right, right, yeah, okay.
Well, I have a question and I don't know if it's going to make any sense. If, say the courthouse was blown away in a tornado or we know that there's a replacement cost or it burned up. Now, what happens out in the country if we have a bridge that, with a six or a nine inch rain that gets washed out and somebody gets hurt? Or is that, would that be covered under our umbrella? Would that, I guess I'm, I don't know what the, where that would fall in, or if someone was hurt and, you know, didn't see the bridge was gone?
Right, I mean, that would be a liability, but there it's still going to be a determination on whether the county was going to be negligent for a, something, an act of mother nature that decides to wash a bridge out, you know. We're, you know, trying to think of things where we could be negligent. If we knew that bridge was washed out, you know, I imagine if somebody drove over that within ten minutes of it washing out, it's probably hard fresh that the county's liable for something like that. But hey, if we knew about that and we didn't get any kind of barrier up for three hours and then somebody drove over that three hours after it washed out, then maybe some potential. It is all going to be a legal battle on determining negligence.
Well, I think that's why Ben and the group are so quick to try to get stuff done. But I guess I just didn't know how, if that was under our umbrella policy, if that would be.
Yeah, anything that the county would be responsible for and then ultimately could have negligence because of we didn't, you know, caused somebody bodily injury for something we're responsible for. And that would be something our policy would react to. But it still has to be determined that we were negligent for, and liability is only triggered by negligence.
Well, in the past, we've never had so many three to five inch, nine inch rains. And all of a sudden we're just dealing with rushing water, so it's, I guess I was just curious how that would play out.
That would be if it was determined that we hadn't some negligence that contributed to an injury or some property damage. You know, if it's somewhere in a situation where a sinkhole is created in the road and we didn't, once we knew about it.
Were aware of it and.
Yeah, didn't barricade it off or something and then somebody drives their semi over it and, you know, breaks an axle and does all this stuff and, you know, there's property damage, maybe nobody's hurt. Well, the two things that can trigger property damage and bodily injury, so.
Oh, we don't need a tornado, we're done hopefully with three, five.
Well, I think so.
Yeah, my question to the board is if they feel the four million is enough?
That's a fair question, it, yes and no. Has that been, to your knowledge, since you've been working with us, Scott, has it been increased any?
Not in the last two years, I mean, I know I probably should have bounced it off Larry, but in the last two years it's stayed at this level. I would have to look back in our notes to see when the last time it was increased.
I thought that too, you know, in this day and age. And tonight, thank you for, which is what you insurance folks do, you put the cost of insurance. I mean, it's, like you said, fourteen hundred dollars, give or take, to raise it a million dollars per year, isn't huge. I mean, that's a million more and millions, a million, but.
That's just a question I thought I'd throw out there. I don't know if it's necessary or not, it's all.
Well, I think we, Ben, it's just a second. We have a day or two to, we can at least think about it. All we have to do is go and have, change the work, so important.
Funny you mention that because I kind of thought that too. In the majority, the counties are at five plus.
Five or above, yeah. I, yeah, fifty-four out of seventy-seven, so, so yeah.
And like you said, they won't give you specifics on that.
Yeah, you can't, you know.
If it's confidential, but.
Yeah, it's confidential, they just give us some generalities. They can't tell me that, you know, a suit is here and right guy is here and where.
Which is fine, and yeah, there's a lot of factors go into that, size of county, amount of what they're.
Bigger and everything.
I think that's a fair thing, we have, I mean, that's something that can be changed anytime, correct?
Yeah, we can, we can request to add that increase.
All right. We appreciate you coming up here.
Yeah, nicely put together report for insurance business.
And I'll leave, I'll leave these, or I'll bring them back up for Peggy after the meeting's over and everything. These, Mr. Chairman, we have some signatures that we need to get back to ICAP. This is just an acknowledgement that basically I was here to review things with you and then I'm leaving the schedules with Peggy. So that would be.
That thing is, we're paying short of eight hundred thousand dollars for equipment we don't have installed yet.
I actually think that is for the councils and stuff.
Wait, check, check.
I will.
Oh, this is one, I guess.
Oh, this is Scott's.
What this one, this is a proxy saying that primary contact for, you know, any kind of.
You think it is.
Loss control. We've got all these, our emergency director is a primary and then take one is an alternate, so you're just.
Let's find out.
They can contact those folks for loss information and other things like that.
See, Scott, we have a question also. Back to that, this equipment, radio equipment.
Want to continue working with ICAP, okay?
Yes.
Scheduled equipment.
Is that for the dispatch equipment in dispatch councils? Or is that for this new radio tower stuff or whatnot?
That's, everything that you guys signed an agreement with Motorola.
Oh, okay.
So they, they require, they sent a contract that says you're leasing this and the equipment's valued at seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars and we, that's that lease agreement with Motorola, thank you.
Well, this, we don't have that installed yet. We have part of it, but most of it, no.
Okay.
So we're actually insuring something that we're not using yet.
Yeah, and that's.
Be like Ben buying a new road grader. We insure it, but you're not going to get the road grader for two years. Well, we got it insured, so we don't have it, I don't know.
For two years, it'll be outdated by then.
Well, and that's the crazy thing because we had to send proof of insurance or certificate. You guys signed that agreement and they sent something to Peggy that says, you know, send us your certificate that this.
I understand, they, it's kind of like if you sometimes build a building, you technically need insurance on the building.
Before you build it.
Before, so as it's built. Because if it gets seventy-five percent completed.
And deliver it and drop it off, you got to cover it.
Pretty much, because.
Before it's working.
It's sitting there or they're in the process of building it and it blows away. And then these have insurance. So we're insuring something we aren't using yet. And I understand the technicalities of it.
Yeah, just the way their contract reads and in order to get that even going, that's what we had to do, so.
Okay.
Well, I feel that works. Thanks, Scott.
All right.
Thank you. All right, Ben.
Keep it short and sweet for camp. I think he's got a lot on his plate today.
Today I have two applications to work in the county right of way. The first is for Mid-American. This is just off the boat on the blacktop. I went up and looked at it last Thursday or Friday. What they've got is they've got a pole on private property and the homeowner would like this moved out to the county right of way. So I guess this is just the formality of installing a pole at the county right of way and then I'm assuming the homeowner is going to switch to underground at their house, but we don't know about that. That's probably why they're going to stay out.
Yeah, is this the one that we're looking at here, Mid-American?
Yeah, the Mid-American.
Really boring, a new underground line to replace overhead service wires. Is this the one, Gabe?
The Mid-American one is installing a 40-foot wooden pole on the east side of Iowa Avenue, south of boat.
Oh, okay.
At 1354.
Okay. But your guess is that from that pole into the property is probably going to be underground?
My, that's my guess. They don't tell me what they're doing on private property, but I'm assuming...
So they can get it off of their property and then their property has no overhead?
Right, it looks like they've done some work on the acreage here lately. I know they're putting in new trees for Grove. I think they redid the house and in the process of that, I think it's probably to switch their power beat.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve for that application, working right away for Mid-American on that 1354 Iowa Avenue.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried.
The second application is for Midland Power and this is to switch an overhead line west of the high school here in town. Switch from overhead to underground, so they're going to do a directional door underneath the blacktop, which is good for us. It eliminates one overhead line that we eventually catch with the box out.
I'll make a motion to approve this work in the right of way for Midland Power Company.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried.
And I see underneath my name that you also got approved resolution 2018-14.
This is what was suggested by the surface bureau. That after you were officially appointed as engineer, that there be a resolution passed that you're designated, authorized and empowered on behalf of the board to execute the certification of completion of work and final acceptance thereof in accordance with plans and specifications in connection with all farm-to-market and federal or state aid construction projects. And then they also requested we send them a copy of that so they can have it on file too, so.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2018-14.
We have a motion?
Aye, we'll second that.
And a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried.
That is all I have. Or if we need the rain that they got down south.
Did it affect anything, the detour, detour?
It's still open.
There did they, because they did get less up north.
They opened it Saturday, I believe.
Did it get closed back up or did it fill down?
I, I think it's, I think it's still open for traffic. I haven't been up there to look at that yet. I know we, we put some temporaries up over the weekend and took them back down. I did give one call from dispatch where a tree had fallen on the road. So then they called me about 10 minutes later and said the deputy just picked it up and moved it off the road, so.
I've seen a few that he wouldn't move.
On the road or is that it just falling because it's big enough?
Lower Sheldon really got chopped.
Yeah.
Now, there was some stuff.
Pretty good beating down there.
Yeah. I see throughout town here, a lot of people have winds and whatnot piled up there in the road, so.
Well, it's hopefully is the end of the rain and we're far better off than if you're the naked, rough.
Ten inches of rain in a matter of a couple hours, yeah.
I have a question for you there down at the Erickson Sand Pit down by God's Park. One of the drivers down there, you know, I think we've talked about this before and I understand driving truck, he hauls sand and goes, has to go around four miles, you know, to the highway. So they've been cutting across the net, what is it, 260th?
We call it Thorson Timber. I've had a couple of people that live on Thorson Timber that are complaining about a number of trucks.
Well, I said I'm not psychic or whatever, but I can only imagine when you have two or three dump trucks, side by sides, whatever, going past on their gravel road all day, every day. Because the number was like 10, he was trying to eight, 10 loads of town a day. So that means they're going by their house 20 times to save the miles and I understand, but I said I'm just pretty sure that people probably called in and that's why you got phone calls or please use the highway. So he just asked me at church yesterday if I got any response. So I'm making an official MS and you have supposed to respond to me at all, right?
Yeah, I've, I've talked to, I believe, two property owners that live on that stretch of road. We've called and talked to, I believe, the blacktop service that owns the pit now and asked them, but I'll call and ask them again.
Well, I'm pretty sure that...
Public road aside from embargoing it or putting a weight limit on it.
Yeah, as you said, it's probably nothing to do with it.
Just ask for, just please not do it. As a courtesy.
Well, it's kind of a hairpin turn up there at the top for trying to get a truck and you kind of have a couple of different places where the site isn't the best, with the trees as low and so on. To me, it makes more sense to be safer and be on the, but the four miles is four miles. And I don't think they're going to be hauling any sand for a while, the way that...
It's underwater right now.
They're probably rinsing their sand for a few days to, couldn't even get to the road. It was underwater last night, I drove out by there and...
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't hauled out of there for at least a week, just because I know that's all, I mean, the lane to get back to the ditch is underwater, so.
And how are we doing on our change in our time?
The guys seem to be doing pretty well.
I think that three-day weekend probably...
The 410s, they're just now getting used to the three-day weekend with the rain that we had southwest of town. I had to call in guys to work on Friday, so they didn't get that Friday off. This week, they're back to straight eights because of the holiday and then they'll switch back to 410s next week. But from the ones that I've talked to, they like having their Friday off. I mean, it makes it so that they can, they can get some of the things done that, you know, they can run to the bank, you know, they can do the, the things that either are pressed to do Saturday morning or you just don't get done.
Well, the other question I have is, are we on, we're out and about, are we noticing the crossover pipes from driveway to driveway that are holding water and are we going to get those scooped out when it's dry so that water moves from one side of the ditch to the other or around intakes or are we taking note of those or does farmers get antsy when they see that and then they want to get in and dig in our ditch and then we have, so I'm just, I need to ask that, so I thought I'd ask you.
I guess I'd have to know which location you're talking about as far as whether or not we have a work order completed for them. Have I gone out and driven around and looked to see where driveways are holding back water? No. I know there's quite a few locations where driveways have been widened in the past by private owners where they just cover up the culvert rather than extending it. Usually we find those when we clean that stretch ditch. Because we'll dig back until we find the pipe and then we usually get a call from the farmer pissed because he just lost 20-foot driveway.
I did, unless there's a lot of cross pipes, they got to darn good clean, haven't they?
There's, yeah.
They were open, they got cleaned out.
Everything's been scoured and cleaned.
The flush isn't full effect.
I know last week we started going around southwest of town at least, cleaning up debris piles from all of the cornstalks that have been washed into the road dish and around the intakes. Talked to my foreman last week, he said they've got at least another week of cleaning up those piles. So I know they're doing that southwest of town. I know north of Larry Lanes, we've got tree branches that piled up on the double box culvert that we put in last year. That's on their list, hook the chain around. I think they talked to...
Can they reach down in there as wet as it is? Probably not.
You can walk down the wall in between the two, wrap the chain around the pile and then pull it back up. As far as I know, last week they were trying to talk to Larson's because they've got a pile of trees on the northeast side to just pile it on their trees and then whether we burn it or they burn it at a later date. But yeah, it, it sounds like now they're, they're finally to the point where they're about done hauling rock. They're going to start flipping away on these work orders that are built up over the last six, eight months.
Isn't, in regards to Bruce's comment or concern, you know, you and I looked at some stuff east of Livermore where, you know, questionable, a lot of water, you know, even then and more water now. Basically, if it's concerned, make sure it's on a work order.
Right.
If there is, like you said, an intake potentially not correct for whatever reason, just make sure it's noted, like you said, so that it's there and then they do get a, you know, opportunity to look at it.
Yep, then it's, then it's a digital log, then the guys get it, get it on the tablet and as they're traveling can say, oh, well, a half a mile from here, I've got another...
Yeah, they might be, have one they know of, but if they know of the other one...
Right.
And if you get contacted with an exact location, because, you know, we could drag you out on every last concern, then it's there. It's there for them to, you know...
And we build, we usually build the, the work order right there on the spot, whether it's somebody that calls in or somebody that comes in. A lot of times I'll either bring them back to my desk or Sue will pull them over her desk and, and we'll pull up the, it's more or less a Google Earth map and have them point exactly where it is.
And that's why I say an exact location and an exact concern, whether it's a driveway pipe or it's an intake potential issue. Just get it noted and then it can be addressed. Because I know, we've talked in the past, I think a lot of these things have, yeah, it was brought up or somebody thought that, you know, it got on a work order, but they weren't specific and particular enough to say it's right here and this is a concern and if it's there, it'll get looked at. But if it never gets on the work order, who's, who's to know?
As far as we know, if it's not on the work order, it's not a problem.
And I think that's been a lot of problem over the years that, because I think people say, well, why didn't this, you know, why had this concern? Well, you might have the concern, but if it ever get documented as a plug intake or plug, plug driveway.
I talked to a maintainer operator, but it never got people to fill out.
Right.
Doesn't constitute a work order.
Yeah, but no, it has to make sure that it gets...
And just talking to a maintainer operator doesn't put it on...
No.
A work order. I mean, calling the office and talking to Sue or Dave or myself, that can get it onto a work order.
The specific location and concern and then it'll get on and it'll get looked at.
And, and if it's somebody just requesting a ditch cleaned out, that doesn't necessarily mean that it happens. I mean, somebody usually goes out and reviews it, sees if it's necessary, you know, I mean, if it's just a couple of inches, right, it's, all you're doing is removing the sod, it's not doing any good.
Right.
Because you got to get your ass established.
Okay, well, thank you.
Do you have something on that mower if you wanted to ask him?
Oh, I, I, while Tony was in here, I just asked him, we talked about that mower and the scalping or the, looked like it was plowing.
It doesn't scalp anymore. That was, Mike Whitehead was playing with the float lever, which basically leaves the wing down and as you come into a driveway, it, it picks up, but the, the skid plate on the interior side of that is what ends up putting a groove through the driveways as it runs through and then drops back down on the other side. So you just have to mow without it in the float position.
Okay. Well, I told Tony, I'm not sure what the...
It hasn't been lately, I assume, right?
I haven't seen it around. I've been over, or down southeast, so...
Because I think after that, after that first two or three days where they were running, we were talking about it and they tried running a couple of different ways and had a pickup following behind them to see how it was mowing and, and what they were changing and they figured out it was the float position, just don't run, don't run with the float on, so.
Good point.
That should be...
I asked Tony and he said he would check with somebody if, if they needed to adjust something or whatever, but he needs to take care of, awesome, appreciate it, thanks. Okay, looks like we're to the bottom.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ben, have a good week.
Yeah, you guys too.
Approved resolution 2018-15, standing in the terms of the sale of Oxbo.
We are required to have a resolution and also put a notice in the paper, I sent it off to the newspaper, that we will, the sale of the Oxbo property will be by sale bids and the sale bids would be accepted in the honor of the office at the courthouse until 9:00 AM on July 30th and that's when the bids will be opened. And that's what's required.
That was all prior discussion on that, with Todd and everything we could...
Yeah, we have to note in here that we have a reserve of $150,000. I know we've had conversations about that.
Yeah, you've had conversations, that's why.
Oh.
What about the zoning on that? Is that in there, mentioned in there?
No, that wasn't...
No, I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm just making sure that before something's ever accepted, they know whatever you're planning on doing, whether it's going to be a house, it's going to be a, whatever, it's zoned properly so they don't come back and say, well, we bought it on the assumption that we could...
I think we've had that conversation.
I know we have, but I just want to make sure that we don't end up with someone upset that it was, we told them last week when Todd was here that whatever it's zoned...
It's sold commercial right now.
You're going to have to, right.
And they're going to have to take that up with zoning.
It's zoned commercial, sitting next to several residential houses.
Right. Well, that, I don't know, that would be a zoning question if someone bought it to build, make it into a house. I suppose they'd have to have the discussion, it's a house and it's not a commercial property.
You'd have to rezone, but I'm sure that could be done.
Right, so anyway, it's tough to motion...
It'd be tougher to change it to commercial than from residential, but going down, down is easy.
I was asking a question about the driveway access to the river.
That is always going to be the river...
That's what I thought. Isn't that DOT close enough to the highway that that it would be DOT?
Well, I know out on West River Drive, every so many lots, there's public access to the river, because there's two down around by our house that, if you look at the plot book, there is a, I think it's a 12-foot area that if someone wanted to walk down and go fishing, they have that opportunity. And I'm guessing there's a boat dock there, that that would probably be the same thing. They'll never give it out.
Well, probably DOT property is probably state property, being that it's up to the river or the road.
Permanent easement from the DNR, state conservation, whatever, I mean, something to that effect.
I guess that would be one, whether we would continue to put a dock there, there was a dock there, has been one there for years.
Yeah.
Anyway, any other motions?
Accept resolution 2018-15 for the Oxbo property.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
And a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried. Close same sign, motion carries. Uh, reset hearing date for public hearing on easement of county land operated by the Humboldt County Conservation. How does that goes with that, don't it?
No, this one is for the Nielsen easement.
Oh, okay.
My error, I assumed Todd was putting a public notice in cause it was conservation. Um, he assumed I was and then he did one of us get it.
There you go.
So, public notice went to the newspaper Thursday, so they would have it in time, I wasn't sure the deadline. So it should be in this week's paper, so we need to reschedule for July ninth at eight forty-five.
Does that work for you guys, Tony?
Yep.
July ninth.
My apologies to you guys that upset your progress at all.
What's our hearing date on that?
Okay, I'll make the motion to reset the hearing date for the easement on, uh, Tree River Trail for July ninth at eight forty-five.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Tony, I'm sorry about the...
You needed a vacation anyway, didn't you?
Yeah, I had to shut the phone off, so.
There you go.
You guys have a good day.
You too. Okay, anything else before we go to committee reports, Peggy, your pile looks fairly small.
Yeah, it is fairly small, um, I have just a few small things, this is for Rick to sign. This is your registration for the ISAC annual meeting. You need to okay that for me. Um, we've had a request from the group that does the Iowa Bible reading on the courthouse lawn to use the courthouse on, uh, July fourteenth, starting at seven fourteen AM. Um, they didn't get this to me till today, so I'll put it on next week's agenda for approval. But they've concluded a request here and I think I want to see it, I'm gonna give it to you.
And Green didn't pass?
Yep, yep. Um, wanted to pass along some information on a drainage area, let me see if Chris is available, she can come in for just a second. We don't too often hear good news, so when you hear something good...
I like to hear good news.
Um, yeah, wanna make sure the people involved in that hear it all.
Big blue sky out there.
Yeah, good to see, isn't it?
Cause it is, we need a little more sunshine, dry...
Pour me a cup there.
You're gonna drink the first one.
All right, thank you.
It looks good.
Let's tell the board we don't often get to hear good news and when we do, I want everybody involved to be here. Rich, Rich Williams stopped in last week while you were out, um, on DB thirty-three and he said he just wanted to let the board and the drainage clerk know he appreciates so very much what was done. He said he never thought he'd see that tile that was plugged and was not working correctly ever fixed in his lifetime. Um, he had said there's, the rain events that we've had lately, it's drained beautifully. Um, he has no issues with it, he's, he went and talked to, even the one landlord had some concerns, a neighbor, and it eventually all went down and cleared, so he said, I have nothing to complain about either. So, he said, please let everybody know that this worked and it worked right. And he said, first time in many, many, many years he's seen you do that.
How about that?
We did something good.
We did something good, yep.
Wow.
Finally.
Well, that's great.
Finally, yeah, yeah.
Well...
So, he said, thank you very much to all of you and then especially to Rich.
Well, we appreciate all that too. Thank you, dear.
Yeah, that worked out, what the workforce had got.
It's nice when it does once in a while. Even though there's hiccups with it yet, but...
There's always a lot. I'm, I'm always amazed how much, every project you learn a little something, something you've never, ever heard of happening before it pops up.
The best plan...
Yeah, it never go quite perfectly.
It helps you lay them better the next time, though.
It does, it does prepare you for the next time.
Well, that's true, with this rain event that we just had, there may be some issues that'll come up.
Yeah.
Um, we've had a lot of rain go through here in the last few weeks, even.
Sure have.
Well, now's the time for, if you wanna see how that's backing up over by Fairway.
Mm-hmm. I think I actually saw that a little bit.
It's backing both directions on both sides of the highway, cause of the tile underneath Highway three is darn near full and so usually it just backs up on the north side over there on Nineteenth Street, but it's clear over to the storage buildings on the south side of Highway three and got that little field. It's fairly full, but there's a lot of water flowing down through there, so I think that with us...
Is that an issue from the water upstream or is it the outlet?
I think both.
I think it's, the outlet is probably one of the problems.
Well, and I don't know what we're gonna end up doing with that, with the, down there behind that cul-de-sac or that little...
Yeah, sandbar.
Sandbars there, that, you know, the ducks and the geese has claimed as a habitat and a nice area, but, you know, it's backed up there quite a ways, so. We just...
I'm gonna need help developing a letter for that too.
Oh, for that, that ditch?
To those, uh, disgruntled people, do they have one that looks? Actually, our property doesn't butt up against it, someone else owns all the property that runs along both sides of the street.
Not disgruntled, yeah, they'll be, when they find out you guys wanna take some land or clean it through all and they take down a bunch of trees or something.
Well, there's, it's just a mess, I mean, that's...
It is a mess.
...the easiest way to describe it, it's just a mess that needs to be, so, we'll figure something out. Well, maybe when we're all done here, a little bit, we can have you come back in and we'll put all four brains together and see if we can't come up with the terminology.
All right.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, Dave, you wanna start? Your week?
Um, last Monday, the twenty-fifth, I had a VA meeting at four o'clock. Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, I was up to the food pantry and helped them unload the truck and stock shelves a little bit.
Once again, I appreciate that, I wasn't there.
We got by the couch, I was home mostly, I didn't get up there till about five after ten and they, truck was already there, one pallet unloaded. Wednesday, I went to the mental health meeting for Carl, it was an interesting meeting. I gave him a book there. They says, here, you can be Carl today, sit. So I did. Um, Wednesday night, I had a Midas meeting and I think Peggy passed out all in books that we had, long range planning that they'll deal with next week. Um, that's all I had.
Tonight's your flag night, isn't it?
Tonight, we put the flags up, five o'clock.
I'll try to give Nathan a call and see if we can get, get any participants to come play. I'm hoping my shoulder will...
I wouldn't, don't.
I can come help pull them off the...
Don't.
My right arm's still good.
Careful.
I know.
We can't afford any more workman's comp.
I wish.
No official extracurricular meetings this past weekend, though, I did, uh...
We got the LSU meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Did we have one?
Yeah, we did.
That was the...
Oh, I had it written down the wrong day, sorry.
Yeah, I just said, we already, I already reported on that, it was in la, it was in the minutes, yeah, we were there.
Yeah.
No, so nothing there, but this past weekend, visited with our, uh, weed and brush control guy, Don Reefer, Brush and Weed Control Company, um, we visited about the weed program, that is gonna be fine. The brush program is being hindered because of the flooding, but they will get to that, no, as per agreed, but it's just, it's been a mess for them and especially in drainage ditches. Uh, wanna mention on the, just because we did look, uh, and I gave Don, I got a bunch of secondary roads maps and we looked at that, we actually drove around and looked at a few cases, uh, we got the hemlock thing under control. Very small patch, but it is hemlock, so we'll get that taken care of. Don would like to, and I'm almost, well, I'll just tell you guys and then you'll know, but right now, the egregious, noxious weeds, everybody calls them iron weeds, are actually giant rag weeds. It's an ideal time to get those taken care of and those are the ones they would prefer to spot spray, if you will, if there's a, you know, and they're pretty, they're gonna be really easy to see from here on out, cause they just keep getting bigger. Get rid of those, the thistle program, yes, if there's an egregious awful spot, they will hit that, but the thistle control is really targeted for later summer, early fall with their product milestone that gets rid of those and obviously they're gonna do the whole county. So we should get a real good grasp on that, cause we were looking yesterday, it's hitting this, so I just, I don't know if we need to put this in the paper, can, can, but maybe make note, what people call iron weeds, which are actually giant rag weeds, that's the ones they prefer here in the next couple of weeks to know where those are and they'll, they'll hit those, they go back and forth here through the county in the next month. But the thistles, uh, really easier to see them, really easier to get to those spots and control them with our proposed and planned program of later summer control and that'll encompass the whole county, but...
Isn't that the allergy, the cause or the...
Uh, they don't help, that and normal rag weed, it's nasty and there's a bunch of other stuff.
Sure.
Didn't wanna give you a little...
So they contact you area?
They can, they can contact anyone, but I'll, and, yeah, Don, he does this, this is in his first rodeo, he works in a lot of counties, uh, Cassuth being one of them, where they do, you know, if there's an outbreak of something, but really the giant rag weed is the one that, inch, should be controlled now, uh, very cost effective, not a very expensive product, that controls it and get rid of that. And it's amazing, it's about like anything else, when you actually physically go off to look for weeds, you don't see very many, but we know they're out.
There's five.
We know they're out there, and we did see some, they're out there, uh, we do not really want to...
Our county compared to some is quite clean.
Yeah, and it'll be a lot cleaner moving forward, but, and we do not want to, uh, spray as many, if any, of the milkweeds to help out with the monarch butterfly population. Don says, I don't wanna be that guy, so, and, and milkweeds aren't really that noxious of a weed. We like to see them growing for the, but, anyway...
And it's better than in bean fields?
There's not much concern anymore, that's kinda annihilated them, but, so we had a good, Don and I looked at stuff, he's really good to work with, uh, he knows what we wanna get accomplished and he is, uh, very agreeable on, uh, outbreaks, but the outbreak ones now would be the giant rag weed to get those under control.
Okay.
I had no meetings, I was pretty much gone most of the week.
And you caught a couple of big fish.
I caught a couple of big fish.
Yeah, but he hasn't mentioned a thing about a fish fry.
I can show you pictures, can I?
No.
I can put it in the front page.
I'm with that.
I haven't heard a thing about a fish fry.
Oh, wow. Unfortunately, we throw most of our fish back.
Okay.
We just kept the little ones and there wasn't very many.
We ate those already.
Yeah.
All right, um, Tuesday, I had a treadmill meeting over in Eagle Grove, uh, probably call for, for the monthly meeting. They're still trying to convince some people down here to be on the executive board, which meets in Grettinger, you know, and it only meets for thirty to forty minutes, uh, once a month. Well, for us to drive, you know, this Doug Bailey, myself...
The long drive.
Clerk of Grettinger, um, really, uh, can't you get somebody from the board over there that would be closer? So, that was what we recommended. When, or, excuse me, Thursday, uh, we had our CFR board meeting, um, hopefully in a month or so, we're gonna have a, uh, possibly a walkthrough, if you go down past, uh, south and see the facility, um, the, down, the first floor is starting, well, the first floor is pretty much up. Um, they got the rafters for the second, you know, the...
Floor joists.
Floor joists, so they can, so hopefully they're, uh, going to be putting some, some, uh, the second floor together. We're gonna get a, hopefully a tour sometime as to how things are progressing, but, uh, right now, you know, it seems like an endless supply of money going out the door, um, for concrete that gets covered up, that, wow, that was a big bill, so, um, everybody's anxious, uh, hopefully we're... Can't get them to say what, if we're on target or if we're behind schedule or if we're...
For, you know, construction wise, all this rain slows things down too, you know, mud conditions and you can't work when it's raining.
Yeah, so they, they did, uh, tell us that, you know, they're still waiting for Humboldt County to set a date for, um, their open house, which is done through the chamber, which the chamber hasn't gotten back to them cause they had some changes in the chamber, so every month I get rabies because I haven't got Humboldt County's dateset, which I gotta get ahold of them to try to do, so, um, and I was, I guess I would reiterate, hopefully we'll get some people tonight and, uh, for flags is five and they go down Friday night.
Friday night, five.
Friday night at five, so I will call Nathan, hopefully out over the radio at noon and see if we can't get some young kids to come help us old folks, so, anyway, that's all I have, other than the fact that I guess I would hope, uh, we have our Fourth of July on Wednesday and we'll be in the parade and we wish everybody the...
To avoid the rain, a whole lot of, I mean, slight chance of rain, no?
Slight chance, but we've been hitting the lottery pretty often on that, if it's a slight chance, we can get through three inches.
Slight chance, I mean, two, three inches.
But I guess we're, we're anxious to celebrate the Independence Day, so, and I know there's a lot of people, I've heard, uh, pros and cons about fireworks, sleep with headphones on or something, cause, oh God, there are fireworks, oh, it's a couple of days, the way I look at it, I don't know.
Yeah, but it started last week.
I know, I know, but you know what? The more they complain about it, the more and louder they'll get, the, so... Anyway, uh, any other thing else that we have?
Um, yes, wanna bring up that, uh, received a call from Jennifer Croll from Iowa Select Farms, uh, in the last week and, uh, there, I am, and, and invitation to everyone on the board to meet tomorrow morning at ten AM at a proposed hog site on Delaware Avenue. Uh, I can give you the exact location here, it's ten o'clock tomorrow morning. So, extending the invitation to all of us through me to take a look at that, I have extra information on it.
Where's Delaware, uh?
It is, uh, just...
When it comes out of Edison.
Yep, just before, if you're on, uh, Highway three, just before you, uh, not Highway three, excuse me, uh, whatever. Bradgate Blacktop, yeah, pardon me, just before you get to Bradgate.
Okay.
Just, uh...
Far east of there?
Yes. Just east of Bradgate.
And then north?
South.
South?
South.
South.
South. Yeah, I have the exact, the location, right. This is a hundred and seventy, so...
Sort of a, is it picked out, is it...
I don't know, proposed, you know, non familiar word.
Iowa Select says they're gonna be more open with where their buildings are going, so this is probably...
So I guess, you know, you can take that as positive.
Yeah, before they wouldn't even know about it until it was...
Built.
Built.
Bout.
Yeah.
So they are reaching out, I have some other information here that, whether they're gonna do this or not, that it might be something that we can ask them, they showed the layout of the proposed site, double barn, forty-eight hundred head, electric static fence design.
That's nice.
I mean, that's, there's nothing that's indicated whether they're gonna do this or not, but they, she said this. So, I just, obviously I'm gonna go, I hope most, if not all of us could be there, but their plan is just to... Meet, meet there, I said, you wanna meet, just there, yep.
I think they are trying to be better neighbors.
They are, they are, so I'd be a good place to start with them, um, ask some questions, have some conversation.
Well, Dave, would you plan on, are you planning on?
Yeah, I'm trying to...
How about you, Rick?
I'm trying to get out there.
Well, I'm just saying so you can, we can let Peggy know that possibly...
I am definitely gonna be there.
I can't guarantee that I am because I'm at a tee time in Dunkelman Speed Mill, so, starting probably at 6. So I doubt if I'll be able to get back across that way. There's three of you there. I guess I would hope we'll have the information covered as to...
You know where that is.
I just want to make sure.
You two guys are going, I won't show up so we don't have to worry about the violation of meetings.
There you go.
Yeah, so they probably don't want me there. They'll be like, "Oh, the camera."
Yeah. They'll be like, "You're free."
Not going to take a picture of her right now, I guess.
You don't have any other meetings tomorrow?
Yeah, if one of you can't go, give me a call and I'll go there.
I like to have both of us there. Like Rick said, they're being a little more proactive on that. I mean, that's...
I mean, that's what we ask. So, they're doing it, so let's comply.
Yep. No, I would plan to and I said, and she just, I've been in contact with her on a couple of other concerns on a couple of other sites, so she just feels like calling me and I said, "Well, I want the information to pass on to everybody." So that's what I'm doing. That's where it is tomorrow morning. Dave and I will check it out.
We'll all get two there, but if one of them can't go, we'll try to adjust, so that way Peggy's covered.
Just give me a call when you can make it.
I think we'll be fine with that. I don't think it will take that long and what...
Yeah, I don't think it will.
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock, okay.
I told Dave I'd call him in the morning, so make sure that we coordinate getting there.
I don't think I have anywhere else going.
All right.
I know, I know. So that's, oh, well, I'll bring this up in more detail at the LEC meeting, but we're working, being now the tower, you know, place, that whole tower business with this radio system has been kind of thrown in our laps. I'm working through that on the county's behalf and the LEC's behalf to... It's, it's been processed. I mentioned something to Peggy.
Yeah, we're getting a couple of quotes from two different...
Yeah, it's ongoing. I will have a lot better information week because our LEC meeting got pushed till next week and I hope we have something to really tell you of that meeting, but it's, it's, we're working on it. We want to get it up and running. Now we're paying insurance on it, like have something to pay the insurance on.
I would let, let you know that yesterday I spoke with Dan Schall, Scholl for the mayor, just seeing if there's anything going on in town with the flooding. The city put a couple of pumps in the south end of town just as cautionary in case the water came up and they didn't have to go running and trying to find pumps. They had them in place, which caused the people to be pissed that they're sitting in the middle of the road. Now, what are we going to do? Well, they're there. In case the water comes up, they start them and we're good. So, you know, you can't be proactive. We're supposed to be reactive and then we get sold it because they... So, but Dan had said that everything was good. As far as, I didn't hear anything from Melanie as far as anything in the county, but I know there were some people sandbagging out on the West River area because my neighbor's went and got some. I know she's got sandbags over there that are available if, if people, the water keeps coming up, so they are...
They have them at the county shed there.
I think they're over at the secondary roads in that sand area. She has an old... That's where, I think it was Jim Groenbeck got his little cement concrete deal, was calling to help him. Two or three people make them, so I guess that's as far as the county and the city.
The forecast looks dry, so that's good.
Yes.
And drying, 90 degrees, so we're going to get, we're going to get a good crop of mosquitoes going here, right?
I was talking to a farmer yesterday and he's kind of like, "Yeah, it was just getting dry enough, but I thought maybe I could get in replant beans," but he said, "After almost four inches Saturday, forget that now."
Yeah, that's done.
Well, one farmer in the south of town that did replant it, I said, "You're going to fill that pond right back up?" And I saw last night it's full.
Yep.
Anyway, I don't understand a motion.
I'll make a motion to a juror.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. We're out at 9:40.